Not singing Bruce. Mr. Lee, would you be so kind?
Sure. God, we'd like to thank you for allowing us to come together and try to make decisions to better our community as a whole and come together. You guide us with wisdom and the determination to make decisions today. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
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 Here. Hey, current copy of the Meetings Act in Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. I would like to draw your attention to if you've got a copy of your agenda. If you don't have a copy, there should be some back here in the corner, but if I could draw your attention to the meeting procedure. Public may address specific agenda items at the pleasure of the mayor. If recognized by the mayor, please state your name and address and limit remarks to three minutes or less. Out of respect to city employees, we request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or mayor, and individual in violation will be declared out of order. We'll begin with the consent agenda. All matters under consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any city council member may, however, remove an item from consent by request. Item number one, approve the minutes of a regular meeting on August 7th, budget work session on August 14th, 2018. Item number two, approve mayor's reappointments of Glenn Peterson and Romano Polanco to the Cody Scout Commission. Item number three, approve mayor's reappointment of Kim Shapiro to the Historic Preservation Commission. Item number four, approve mayor's reappointment of Edie Patterson to the Community Redevelopment Authority. Item number five, approve application by Aiden Enterprises LLC, Sutherland Longhorn Bar, for a special designated license on October 13th, 2018, from 3:00 PM to 1:00 AM at the DNN Event Center, 501 East Walker Road, for a wedding reception. Item number six, send application of Jennifer Hansen as liquor license manager at RMH Franchise Corporation, Applebee's Neighborhood Grill and Bar, located at 102 Platt Oasis Parkway to Liquor Control Commission, with no recommendation. Item number seven, send application of Rivers Edge Golf Club LLC, Rivers Edge Golf Club, for a Class C liquor license, that's beer, wine, and distilled spirits, on and off sale, located at 1008 West 18th Street, to the Liquor Control Commission, with no recommendation.
Do we approve items one through seven of the consent agenda?
A second. Item, uh, regular agenda. Item number eight, public hearing to report, public hearing to hear a report from the program administrator, Gary Pearson, on the status of the Quality Girlfriend LB840 program. Gary, if you'd be so kind.
And since this is technically a public hearing, mayor, if you'd go ahead and call a public hearing.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, this is a public hearing, so we'll move forward.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members, public. This is a, just a status report on the Quality Growth Fund, and to help the, the public also better understand the program and so forth. I think it's important to everybody to understand how the program was formatted originally and how it is incorporated into the state statutes. Nebraska had come through the 1980s and was, uh, farm economy was really depressed and a lot of rural communities were really suffering at the time. So Nebraska did a couple different things to, to help the outmigration that was occurring in all the rural communities and the economy, uh, that most of them were dependent upon agriculture, to give them some tools that would help bring additional business and industry and keep business industry in the state of Nebraska. So they adopted the Employment Investment Growth Act, which was known as LB775. Today, it's more commonly known as Nebraska Advantage Act. And the other tool they give, uh, local communities in 1991 was the adoption of, was known as Legislative Bill 840. Today, um, many years later, is still known as LB840. In North Platt, it's also been known as the Quality Growth Fund. So that's what led to, um, the eventual adoption of this in, uh, in Nebraska. The plan forms the foundation for the collection expenditures of local tax revenues for economic development, and voters approve the plan, and voters approve the funding mechanism, the provisions of the local plan then become, uh, the Local Option Economic Development Act for, uh, the different municipalities. Uh, in North Platt situation, a community first approved a plan and a funding mechanism in 2001. Voters have to vote on both of those issues separately. Uh, state statute allows for the plan to be implemented for up to 10 years. So in, uh, 2011, that then was renewed by the, the voters of North Platt and continues to stay in place through, uh, 2021. And 2020, we'll be working with city officials at that time on a new proposed plan, uh, that will need to be taken to the voters at some point, either in late 2020 or early in 2021. Uh, in the initial plan, and still, uh, in place today, the city and, and DevCo, or the Development Corporation, uh, agreed that our organization would be the administrator, dealing on the front line with the applications, organizing, the hosting of meetings and so forth, and the committee, but the committee members are still appointed by, recommended by the mayor, and, uh, appointed by the mayor and ratified by the city council, and it's considered a public body. So all our meetings are open, public meetings. We make sure the media's alerted to it, just like you do with your council meetings, and, and, uh, every, every meeting I've had since I've been here, uh, they have attended. It's, uh, extremely important that, um, communities have, uh, this kind of economic development tool in their toolbox, uh, for a number of different reasons. I mean, it's, it's a way that we can be competitive, uh, when we compete for outside projects that other communities are, are, uh, also wanting to attract, and other states are probably a lot more aggressive even in their own city programs than what Nebraska is. Nebraska's is fairly conservative. Um, to date, there have been 53 Nebraska communities have adopted an LB840 program, and many of our peer communities have done so. Grand Island, uh, in fact, is the largest community that has an LB840, uh, program. Uh, North Platt funds its Quality Growth Fund on a funding formula, on a sales tax growth factor. Um, it's, um, and Jim, you correct me, or Dawn, please correct me if, uh, if I get this wrong, but it, it's based on, uh, a, a growth of at least over 2% over a base that has been established, and out of that growth, 50% of that can be captured to go into the Quality Growth Fund, up to a limit of $650,000 a year. Uh, in many years, it's reached that level, and some years, it's fallen a little bit short of that. This represents only .13 of 1% of the local sales tax, or just above 1/10 of a cent. Uh, that's fairly conservative compared to a lot of our peer communities, uh, some which have, uh, approved votes of up to an entire half cent going into their economic development program. Um, I'd want to compliment Dawn. She's kept exceptional financial records over the years. It's really easy to follow, and, uh, and it, there's a lot of transparency there where the funds have gone. Uh, to date, if you track back to 2004, there's been 27 different projects financed through either loans or performance-based grants on qualifying businesses, allocating up to $3.9 million of funding. Uh, some of that on the loans is then recaptured and then put back into the fund. There's an additional one man, $25,000 that is currently encumbered on projects that have already went forward, already approved, but all of the funding hasn't been drawn down yet. Uh, in addition, there's $400,000 remaining in that allocation that's set aside, uh, as part of the plan, that 10% had to be go to what was categorized as a small business. Uh, so that fund is also set aside to make sure that small business has an opportunity to qualify for this as well, uh, not only the, the big payroll or the, the, the high-paying new jobs that come to town. This currently leaves $2.7 million in the fund for new projects. We've had several inquiries over the past six months, and some of those are now in process, including one of, uh, pretty major significance. That would be a project located out in the county and not directly in North Platt, but would be eligible and would still have an impact on the community from an employment, as well as additional agriculture trade coming through the community, but that will be your decision when that application comes forward, if you choose to fund that application. Uh, communities need to have a bit of a war chest when some of those home run projects come along, so having $2.7 million in the fund is not a bad thing. It gives you the tools to work with, and it gives you the ammunition you need to be competitive. A perfect example of that is the Walmart Distribution Center, which North Platt was competing with other states, other major communities for that project. And I can think of two other projects in recent times that North Platt was very competitive in, and needed every incentive dollar possible to be in the ballgame. Uh, that was the Facebook project that wound up going to Sarpy County, and then the Veterans Home Project that went to Kearney. But from what I understand, from the sources that had to make those decisions, North Platt was very much in the mix, very much in the running, and you probably wouldn't have been without the LB840 Fund. Um, another point in relationship to the 27 projects that have been funded, it's impacted far more businesses than just those 27 applications and all those jobs that have been created, uh, because some of those projects were multifaceted. A case in point is that the 48 houses built in the Shot in the Arm Program Phase One, and then 103 projected new homes to be built in Shot in the Arm Phase Two. We had 13 different developers that have been involved in that, and a handful of others on the waiting list, uh, for that project. So you impacted several of the other local businesses that benefited from that program. Downtown Revitalization Facade Restoration Program could eventually impact 30 to 40, or maybe even more, downtown businesses that wouldn't be going through the projects they are now without that type of assistance and without your partnership. Uh, the Work NP Program, which we'll talk about on the next agenda item, has the potential to help 30 different businesses find key employings as well. Uh, just, uh, to touch a little bit on our process, uh, our current, uh, Quality Growth Fund Committee, and this again is a city-appointed committee, is made up of Pat Keenan, who's a longtime North Platt businessman, their family's been in business in North Platt for, uh, three generations. Uh, Bob Ferris, former mayor, UNL Regent, and a financial advisor. Uh, Kim Stager is a banker with Equitable Bank. Brock Whirl, who's a local attorney with Norman Paluchek, Herman and Whirl, and Josh Harm with Nebraska Land National Bank, who's also a banker. So you've got a, a really, uh, diverse and very sound, uh, committee that has a solid financial background. That really helps a lot when we filter through the various applications. I commend you on the outstanding appointments you've made on that committee. Uh, when we get an application, and you can get that on our website, the North Platt, uh, chamber website, nparea.com, or they come into our office and pick up an application, first thing we tell the business to do is we kind of explain the rules of engagement and how this works, and we insist that they always do proper business planning, proper financial planning, before ever bringing an application forward. We feel that's our responsibility as the administrator, and we just don't want to have every project coming forward if they haven't done their proper due diligence, so we make sure that that happens. Uh, and we put them in touch with Nebraska Business Development Center, Rural Enterprise Assistance Program, both which provide free services to do business planning, uh, to help them in, uh, get along. A lot of them just have a dream of getting into business, and they really need that extra assistance and understand, uh, what they're getting themselves into and, and the potential financial risk that they have, so that's a, it's a good process. We lose some along the way, who realize, you know, I really wasn't ready to go into business, but then there's some who do go through it, who are far more well-prepared than to go before the committee. They come in again, bring a full, uh, filled-out application, we sit down with them and go through it, make sure there's no holes in it, and, uh, then we set up, uh, a published meeting with the local committee, uh, scheduling it on an as-needed basis, and then they present their case before the committee. Committee goes very thoroughly through it. Sometimes they'll send them back to the drawing board, sometimes they'll say, you know, um, this doesn't quite fit the eligibility factor, we really appreciate your enthusiasm and everything, I think if you'd, uh, help, um, you know, uh, add, uh, to it some of the different things that you could do to, that would give it a little stronger appeal, uh, then we're inviting you back. They rarely just say, uh, absolutely no, uh, we're not gonna do it. It's always, uh, we're just gonna postpone it until you, uh, back, come back and, and then have the, the type of information that's needed. Once they make a recommendation, we forward that on to the city council, you go through the same process, and you always have the final say-so on every project. Some projects, uh, make a financial request that they don't recommend financing the full amount, and they'll, they'll recommend doing a partial amount, or make part of it alone, rather than an out, like, performance-based grant. But you always have the trump card on that. You always have the ability to have the final say, and that's the way the statute is written, and, uh, that's the way that we make sure that it, that it's operated. Um, so provided the plan in your packet, uh, that went to you and the media, as well as all the financial information, and if there's any additional questions, more than happy to answer, but, um, I think it's a program that works very well, and, uh, the voters put a lot of faith into the city and to our organization to make sure it's done properly, and that's what we assure you that we will continue to do. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Gary, I for one, I appreciate the way your committee handles these requests in a very responsible, thoughtful way, and oftentimes you come in and, uh, the amount that they initiate the request is, is cut down some, or, you know, you generally, I think, do an excellent job in that regard.
Thank you, Jim.
I think, uh, Quality Growth Fund, for, for me, uh, is totally associated for things in terms of, of infrastructure. Uh, downtown would be an example of that. But my question is, you mentioned, you mentioned Walmart Distribution Center a moment ago, and I didn't catch the context that, that you said that in exactly, but I was given to understand some years ago that when Walmart Distribution Center came to North Platt, that there wasn't yet any funds in the Quality Growth Fund. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Tell me what your involvement has or has not been in regards to the Walmart Distribution Center.
Uh, you're exactly correct, and obviously I wasn't here at the time, Jim certainly was. Uh, but I think that was a project that everybody then realized in North Platt, that we have to have this tool if we're gonna, uh, continue to compete for these types of projects. There were a lot of other creative things that attracted Walmart Distribution Center to North Platt, that the city was involved in, and, uh, those processes then made the difference for Walmart being able to choose North Platt. Certainly without incentives, it would have never happened. Uh, it was, uh, there was also a, a big involvement by the state of Nebraska in, uh, what was now known as the Nebraska Advantage Act, that they were able to take it, um, you know, that helped entice them to locate in Nebraska. Uh, they certainly had several other choices, uh, when they, when they made that decision, and, and, uh, kudos to everybody that was involved in that project. North Platt won the battle, but I think it, and more than ever, it, it focused on the point that you've gotta have a consistent program with funding, or you're not gonna be competitive in those games, those economic development, um, battles that are ensued later on. Uh, so it really did plant the seed that, you know, this needed to happen, and I think you probably had adopted it almost when the, the same process was going on with trying to entice Walmart here, uh, but there just wasn't funds that had been accumulated yet, but, uh, hope that answers your question.
Thank you. I appreciate that information.
Yep.
I might just say that, that, uh, lots of times when good things happen, lots of different folks like to jump up and take the credit for it, it seems like. I've always felt that the primary, one of the big factors why we got the Distribution Center had to do more with geography and the price of diesel fuel than any other factor.
Certainly, I'm sure had an impact, plus Interstate 80 and the, you know, the logistics that come through here, the workforce, you know, the, the work ethic of Western Nebraska, you know, all those things, uh, no doubt played a factor into it, so. And, and bottom line, the people that deserve the credits, the people of North Platt, the citizens who vote for programs like this, that give us the tools to work with, and it's our responsibility to carry out their mission.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? This is a public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
And public hearing has been closed. Item number nine, approve request for two modifications to the existing Work North Platt Program by extending the current timeline for employee recruitment program by an additional 18 months to April 1st, 2020, and number two, expanding the eligibility for employees recruited, recruited for business from two employees to four, four new employees.
Hello, once again.
Oh, hi, Gary.
Hi. Um, as you'll recall, and, uh, I believe this whole body was in place when we adopted this program, um, 17 months ago, but it will, uh, at the time that it was presented, and this was an outgrowth of our Economic Development Committee's, um, effort to try to help give our local businesses who are fighting the fact that they were, uh, it's a difficult, um, competition out there right now for the skilled, the acquiring skilled labor in, uh, the different communities, and everybody's fighting for the same talent out there. And to give our employers a little bit of an edge, uh, the committee came up with this, this plan that if we had a little bit of an incentive that would help, um, our local businesses to partner with, to help fill some of those positions, it would really put North Platt in a different position than other, other communities where other employers are. So it was kind of a grand experiment, uh, put the program together, we tried to educate the business community in the process, and what it basically does is, is provide a five thou, up to a $5,000 incentive, doesn't have to be that amount, matching what an employer's willing to do to, uh, recruit someone here for a, a job that pays greater than $20 an hour, that they have an open position, and there, there's then an employment agreement that the employee agrees to be here, uh, three years, uh, at that current employer. So it works like a performance-based loan where, uh, it's, part of it's forgiven every year that they're there. Otherwise, they do have to pay it back. It's a little bit complicated in, uh, its implementation, because we have to actually fund the business who then, um, uh, in some fashion, make sure that that winds up back with the employee to cover their relocation expenses, any, any of the other qualifying expenses like college debt, or, uh, down payment assistance on, uh, a house, utility deposits, anything like that that qualifies. Recently, about six months ago, the Wall Street Journal kept calling every month. They'd heard about this program, they were very, just, um, uh, you know, uh, wanted to know more information and were, it was, uh, thought it was really creative and innovative, something different than any other community they had talked to was doing. So they actually featured this in a front-page article, along with two other communities in the United States. From that, uh, came additional then interviews and, uh, phone calls from the Washington Post, the New York Times, all the major TV networks, Scripps Howard, um, and it's just been one after another. And we can tell every time one of those stories hit the news wires, we, we get flooded with phone calls and emails and everybody hearing about this, this program, and it's a lot of people who have never heard of North Platt, Nebraska in their life, or they were driving by IED one time and went through it, and that's their only recollection of it. And it, and, and encourage those folks to, to, uh, research more about the community. We've had a ton of positive, uh, feedback from them. We try to match their talents up with local employers, and a lot of that's just now kind of in play, um, where we probably have had more inquiries about the program in the last 45 days than we've had in the previous 15 months put together. So I think it's had a, a, a point in time where if we could just, uh, ask you to hang in there with us for another 18 months to see how the program continues to blossom, um, and then, uh, the, the employers that we do have engaged, um, uh, they're gonna at least utilize two of the employees, they'd like to recruit more using the program, and we thought since, um, you know, that we haven't been swamped with applications, that perhaps we could open it up to at least four per employer instead of restricting it to two, uh, to help those employers that are really actively out there trying to recruit folks. The whole idea of this was not to just help, um, help the major employers in town, but to help that mid-level employer that doesn't have the deep pockets that some of our major employers have. And so they're, they're actively trying to get out there and recruit people. We just didn't want to have it end next month, uh, we'll have the 18-month, uh, kind of cutoff time without continuing the momentum. 18 months from now, if it continues to, you know, not be fully implemented, uh, we'll, we'll basically tell you, you know, the program's over, it was a good try, we got a lot of, we got more positive publicity from the national publications about North Platt, Nebraska, than you could ever spend on a marketing effort spending that amount of dollars. So we got all that for free. And so it, it has served its purpose in other ways than just trying to entice people as employees come into North Platt.
Yes. I think that the marketing side of that, you know, like you're talking about, the free publicity is great and all, um, you know, I've tried to talk to some different businesses and low, small businesses and, um, different organizations, and I guess I'm just not sold that, you know, trying to essentially pay people to move here is probably the solution as much as it is we need to create, you know, a more strong atmosphere here in North Platt. And I think that goes to having our, you know, we need to spend more of our time, you know, working on getting our small businesses up and running, whether it's, you know, established businesses, let's say Happy Heart Specialty Foods wants to expand their business and create a new storefront, you know, a bigger storefront, and add, you know, some more employees that way. Um, these $20 jobs, there's just not, I'm gonna break it to you, I mean, unless you happen to be in the medical field, or the very rare chance, I don't understand why, but, you know, the DC, I mean, it's just, it's a small niche that we're trying to hit with this, and I think it misses the mark personally, and, um, I think overall, it would be better spent time-wise, working on getting up, together with our small businesses here that are struggling and trying to grow, and growing them and creating a better environment here in town, you know, to then recruit these people. They see better town when they come and visit here, they're more likely gonna stay here. If we have to bribe them and pay them to come here, it's just not that great of a fit in the long run, in my opinion, so that's kind of where I'm coming down on this now.
Couple quick things on that. Actually, other jobs out of the medical field do pay that. Skilled labor pays that. Skilled welders, mechanics, stuff like that, do make that kind of money. Second thing, how many jobs have you filled for how many businesses?
There's been three that have been.
Three positions total?
Engaged, there's probably about eight in process now. When I say in process, they're, uh, the employers are, um, either actively recruiting that person, or they're working out the paperwork part of it.
Okay, out of those three, was it two employers or three employers?
Three employers.
So each employer was able to get one employee?
Correct.
Okay, so out of the eight remaining, is it four, eight?
Well, um.
Are they just going after one person, or are they just going after two?
Yeah, right now, they all know those two.
Okay.
Two employees, so there's no, uh, but there are, I'll give you an example. Uh, Creek Carriers, uh, is in, uh, dire need of having more truck drivers here, and, uh, they have a huge presence largely due to the Walmart Distribution Center here. Uh, they want to try to recruit, um, four additional drivers to live in North Platt. They have a tough time trying to decide which ones would get it and which ones wouldn't. So I mean, it would, it would help a situation like that.
And I'm sure that's not, you know, that's why the railroad's not involved, because I mean, they're already offering incentives to come hire.
Right.
We're offering $25,000 to get people, and we can't get people to come in the door currently right now, but I mean, I'm sure that's why they're not asking for you guys to match the funds, because the, uh, ten people.
The railroad hasn't, but we've had four of their, uh, people that want to go to work for them have heard about it on national, um, publicity, and so they have asked and reached out to us. We have reached out to the railroad and said, you know, these people showed the initiative to wanna, um, uh, you know, engage in this program, and it might make a difference whether they accept the job or not, and we'll leave it to the railroad's discretion whether that happens.
And this is a company match?
Correct. That is correct.
Okay, and also, you said they have to stay with the employer for three years?
Correct.
What about staying in the community for X amount of time? Is it three years as well?
They have to live in Lincoln County, yeah.
In Lincoln County.
And they, they cannot be a current resident, though an exception to that. And we do have some students looking at this now. If they're a graduating senior from one of the high schools, if they could find that, that employer that, that, you know, they could enter into three years, be making $20 an hour, they're eligible. But any graduate of Mid Plains Community College also is. And with the various vocational programs they have there, that's a very attractive thing to our local employers. So we have, and we made presentations to the students and to the college instructors that are well aware of the program. I know the building trades program is very, very interested, and obviously, we have a lot of contractors here who need their skills. So there's, there are those conversations ongoing. We haven't had one yet, take advantage of it, but I think, you know, we soon may have.
Thanks.
And, and then just, I wanted to further address the $20 an hour thing. The Nebraska Department of Labor website, which is open to any employer to, to list there, there's on nearly a, if you put the North Platte search engine in, there's about a thousand jobs listed, the Nebraska Department of Labor. Almost fifty percent of those fall in the $20 an hour or greater. And it's a widespread thing throughout, throughout the community. And some of our local downtown businesses are, in fact, trying to recruit that key person for them in a manager's role that want to take advantage of this program.
Jim?
I think that, I think this program has, has some merit. I guess the thing that troubles me is that, I agree with what Andrew said. Seems to me that there are tons of small business employers out there that could use an infusion of free money in their businesses. And it seems like to me we're cherry picking, helping some people be successful to the exclusion of those who choose to make it on their own and recruit their employees and, and make it through the sweat on their brow, so to speak. So I just, I guess I'm not in favor of extending this. Thank you.
I totally respect where you're coming from. I, I think, Jim, when you look at, you know, what we're doing with the facade restoration program, partnership with the city and the, and Chamber Development Corporation, and the state of Nebraska and part of that, that is an infusion of local dollars into those, those downtown businesses. And without that incentive to help them, most of them wouldn't be doing the facade restoration.
Just to follow up, you know, I completely agree. You know, there are skilled labor out there, and they do pay extremely well. So I didn't mean to exclude them from that. But, you know, I guess, I, I don't have a problem if a business wanted to come up and say, hey, we want to expand, we're looking at adding this person, you know. Just trying to think, let's say, you know, Brandon Raby's like, I want to hire a manager for my shop at this restor shop downtown, you know, or whatever, you know, that's, you know, I'm gonna expand, I'm doing this. I think my growth business is this, you know. I don't have a problem with them coming and asking for something to help them out and expand their business. I just, overall, I just think that this is missing the mark in terms of trying to grow the community. I think you make our local small businesses we have now grow and expand and look better and more vibrant, then people see us as a more vibrant community versus trying to bring in these other people and hoping that they're gonna stick around after three years, or they're just gonna take the money, be here for a couple of years and run. So that's just kind of where I'm at on it.
This whole conversation happened because a couple of those local businesses came to our economic development committee, and they said, because we were talking about the shot in the arm program, they said, what we could really use is somebody helping us recruit that key person into town. And that's why that whole conversation occurred. I think Glenn, you were maybe at that meeting, heard that conversation. And so, you know, that's how it all occurred. It was small business generated to start with. So, but I, I totally respect, you know, what, any decision you make, it was, it was worth the experiment to me.
I did sit in on those conversations, and we're, we're invested in it already. Can't see that there would be any harm at all in going ahead and modifying it and giving them a little more time, a little more time to work. And we are going to help the small business person by doing this. Anytime you get more employees to City of North Platte, you're helping. I think it's a good program.
Yes, sir.
Just a comment. It hasn't been a tremendously overwhelming response.
Right.
I don't, and we're not spending the money, so I don't see any problem extending it that extra eighteen months, because we're not gonna spend any more money anyway.
You need more than eighteen months.
All right.
You need more than eighteen months to make this thing work.
Yeah, and we wanted to make sure that we got a chance to report back to you on, on how it was going. And we said at the time that we, that if, you know, if we can see it's working to some degree, we'll be back and ask for an extension of time. But if not, you know, we at least try.
You need a motion? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the request for two modifications, existing Work North, Work North Platte Program, one, by extending the current timeline for the employee recruitment program by an additional eighteen months to April 1, 2020, and two, expanding the eligibility for employees recruited per businesses from two new employees to four new employees.
Motion passed. Thank you, Gary. All right, item number ten, we have a public hearing, an action on recommendation by the City of North Platte Planning Commission for application by Nebraska Colorado Cellular Inc., purchaser and Bud Welch owner, for a conditional use permit to construct a 100-foot monopole telecommunications tower in site located at 809 North Carr Avenue. Yes, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members and city staff. I am Chris Reha, one of Viro Wireless's many site acquisition managers. I'm stationed in Grand Island at 1811 West Second, Suite 455, 68803. Viro Wireless is proposing a 100-foot monopole, not a lattice tower, which is three-legged, not a guide tower, but a 100-foot monopole in a hopefully somewhat friendly, light and industrial zoning district, located halfway between our west site, I think we call that the Lakeview site, and then the east site, which is, I want to say by Poplar Street. Also, it's kind of located east of Buffalo Avenue and west of Willow Overpass. It's on the north side of the tracks, it's at the very end of North Carr Avenue, right off of West Knight Street. We did strike a purchase agreement with the landowner who lives in Alliance, and it's contingent on local approval and all of the state and federal approvals. The purpose of this site is, is to improve our frequency strength. And when you improve your frequency strength, you improve your in-building coverage. So that's what we're really trying to achieve halfway between our west site and our east site, is to improve the frequency strength so that our, the handheld devices can be utilized more at a friendly user applications for in-b buildings instead of outside. We're okay for outside on the streets, but we, what we really want to do is improve the in-building coverage. And to do that, we have to acquire a new site for a set of antennas with the monopole. On top will be the PCS antennas that will talk with your handheld device, and then right below it, which will be somewhere between 80 and 100 feet, will be the microwave dish that will be talking to either our Hershey Tower or our Sutherland Tower. And so far, we do know that we have microwave connectivity at, on around 80-plus feet. So that's important. Right now, again, we are proposing the 100-foot monopole. We have electricity, we have access, we don't need any other city utility. The site is in a, is in a good site where it shouldn't offend the neighbors, and I have talked to a few during the planning commission meeting, public hearing. We had one that was in favor of it, and to my knowledge, none of the other neighbors have opposed to it. We do have FAA approval, and as of right now, it does not need to be lit or marked. And when I say marked, I mean painted red and white. But definitely does not need to be lit unless you request it to be lit. So in a nutshell, that's really about it. I don't want to repeat too much of the information that's already in the CUP application, and it probably might be wise to ask zoning administrator Judy Clark to explain any other details before you might have some questions for me, because she might have some information for you.
Chris, before you run off, can you help me with your last name?
Yes. Okay, R-I-H-A. Big Bohemian from David City.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
You betcha.
You should all have the review comments from the planning commission. I really don't have anything additional to add, except on the review comments, it did say that there would be a required lot consolidation. I do have that application in my office, and they brought the Platte map in today. So we'll get that processed. Unless you have any other questions.
Thank you.
Whether you approve or deny, you really need to utilize one of the appropriate motions that you'll find contained in the materials. If you don't use that format, you open yourself up to a challenge on whether or not your motion's successful in the long run.
Where is the motion, Doug?
Second page, right behind the staff summary report.
Right here?
There's a motion to approve the application.
Yes, yes.
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Public hearing's been closed.
I move that we find the request for a conditional use permit to construct 100-foot monopole telecommunications tower in site located at 809 North Carr Avenue meets the minimum standards stated in the North Platte Code of Ordinances, Section 156-322, and approve and grant the conditional use permit requested with the conditions that all elements of the application are complied with, and with the condition that, one, a subdivision, Platte consolidation, or consolidating all five lots into one lot, be submitted, approved, and filed with the Lincoln County Register of Deeds prior to issuance of any building permit or construction of the site. One, the use shall conform to all applicable ordinances, laws, and regulations of any governing jurisdiction. Two, the use shall have adequate water, sewer, and drainage facilities. Three, ingress and egress shall be designated as to minimize traffic congestion in public streets. Four, the use shall, in all other respects, conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located. Five, the use shall be in harmony with the character of the area and the most appropriate use of the land.
Second.
And that motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Item number 11, second reading, an action to approve ordinance number 3995 for amendment to the City of North Platte Code of Ordinances, Section 150 dash 030 relating to international building code relating to elevators and conveying systems. Yes, please.
An ordinance of the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, meaning Section 150.030 of the municipal code of the city relating to the international building code to remove enforcement of Chapter 30 of said code relating to elevators and conveying systems, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
Move that we approve ordinance number 3995 for amendment to the City of North Platte Code of Ordinances, Section 150.030 relating to the international building code relating to elevator and conveying systems on second reading.
Second.
And that motion passes. Item number 12, consideration of request by 308 BMX Inc. to approve license agreement to operate motocross racetrack on property owned by the City of North Platte.
Move that we approve the request by 308 BMX Inc. to approve license agreement to operate a motocross racetrack on property owned by the City of North Platte.
We need a second, first.
Yes. We need a second. We need to hear that.
Second.
Did some, did we get a second?
Yeah, a second.
Okay. All right.
Good evening. Thanks for having us again. We got you an agreement for the 308 BMX. It's between the 308 BMX and the City of North Platte. It's a requirement that the last couple of meetings we've had, as well as our side, we need that to go further with constructing the 308 BMX track. It's a bicycle track, dirt bike track, that will enhance our city, I believe, and help bring in families and things like that. But I know it got too late. We've been working on this pretty heavily the last couple of months. I had a couple of delays, which I'd met with Jim, and Mr. Stack wasn't available during one of our meetings. But Mr. Stack did provide the original agreement to us, and then we sent it back with changes. And then we have recently retained the services of Shante Durham, I'm sure I said that right, and she's our attorney on this, who has looked this over. She's been in communication with Mr. Stack to refine the wording in the agreement. So I'm just here to get this license agreement going so that we can take the next step. I, I don't know if you've had time to look at this. I know Mr. Stack has, and he's been in communication. I know one of the things that was your concern, Mr. Stack, was the insurance. I think that you had brought that up to Ms. Durham, and I did bring in Mary Backenstoss from Western Insurers, so that she, we can explain the original meeting with the one you missed. When I went to Mr. Stack, Alan Miles and I went there, and, no, Alan Miles and Mr., I'm sorry, and Mr. Hawke, excuse me, sorry. Anyway, we had met with him, and in discussing this, the million-dollar liability that we're retaining through Western Insurers is adequate at this time. And as time goes on and phases change, we will up the insurance, and then USA BMX, once we are sanctioned, will cover that $5 million, and that'll be involved in that as well. So we've got that covered, but we have, we have just recently got a quote to get the umbrella to get it up to $5 million, but it's a healthy amount that we would like to wait off until we get the construction phases going. I don't understand all the insurance side of it, but if you have questions on that, Mary has graciously joined us this evening to help us out in that area. The fees were the other concern that Mr. Stack had with retaining, this is city land, it will remain city land, it is a park, so that's how it will be going forward with 308 BMX track built on that. So the fees that we're proposing is $1 upon the date of the agreement of signed, so that there is something there. And I don't think there was any particulars discussed on if it's a yearly amount, or every 10 years, or it's just an infinite. I'm not sure about that either. So the agreement is in front of you, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have. Their legal agreement is attached to it as well. I think that most of the bases that you requested from the agreement are in here so that we can get this going, so.
Bunny, before we go in, would you be so kind as give your name and address?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I was, I was forgetting.
Just for the record, please.
Okay, Bunny Hind, H-I-N-D-E, and it's B-U-N-N-Y, 7601 Fortune Hills Road, North Platte. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
So I've had some meetings with Mr. Hawke, and with my board, and they're an outstanding board, and they've worked very, very hard. But we're to the point where the agreement needs to be agreed upon. And so that's what we're, I'm here for tonight, so. Yes, sir.
I have a question. Where are you at with your funding?
Where are you at with your funding?
I did not bring the funding amount, Mr. Peterson, because I can't go any further with anything until this agreement's done. I can't get the grants, I can't get, well, we can get commitments, but this agreement is the one that you requested, all of you requested, in February, and this is what is the forefront of our meeting. And so the funding is, it's just non, I'm not even gonna go there with it at this time because the agreement needs to be addressed first, so.
But I think it's almost imperative that we have some type of funding agreement. It always seems to me, or at least most of the time, when businesses are formed, the biggest reason for failure is underfunding. And I personally don't want to get involved in something that is completely underfunded. And right now, from the numbers I've seen, it is extremely underfunded.
I think the original meeting where it came up for $188,000 was off the charts. It's not going to cost that much. I think that that was a number that came up through the TC Engineering original report, but if you'll look at this, we're requesting the city's help. In the, in the original land site is a dumping ground right now for limbs, you know, tree limbs and things like this. It is not attractive, and with the city clearing the site, we're requesting that in item number four, the utilities, and clearing the site, I think with all of this, the public will be much more getting on board with donating. And, but we can't get the grants. We have, this is, this is halting everything, and you requested this, so I, we're delivering it. And it's been, in the last couple of months, I've had several meetings, myself, just myself, along with the board, working behind the scenes on some things. So the funding is not gonna, it's non-existent until this agreement goes forward.
But what would you, what would you give us as a reasonable amount of money to come up with? I'm talking cash, not promises. You can't spend promises.
I would say that with the terms of some of the grants, and we have been in this situation before with the city council where we're, and with the public, and with the extended communities, we're always in this catch 22. You have requested the agreement, so this is what I'm delivering at this meeting, is the agreement. And I need your help and assistance on going forward. It will have no bearing. The funding, even if, we, and we gave you the first, great, our best-case scenario and our worst, and those were discussed before as well. So the agreement is, is upfront here, so I cannot really address the funding at this time. I won't address the funding at this time. It's, it's not going to be going any further with that because the, the agreement, it's just all based on this. I can't even, our grant writer can't apply for the Nebraska Game of Parks without this funding. I can't get a conditional use permit without this, I meant through the agreement. I can't get a conditional use permit, which I spent a lot of time working on to get that done, and sent it in, and then we, they said, where's the agreement? So this agreement has got to come first. This is, I don't want to put that, I don't, I mean, nothing right now. We can't do anything without the agreement.
Mr. Lee.
Okay, I just want to talk about the agreement.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So here's my questions with it. Number four, let's start there.
Sure, that's the big one.
Yeah, that's, that's the big one here. So when did this change that now, when this started and you guys came to, Brandon came to us, he says, yeah, I want to build a parking lot, I want to build this concession stand, I want to do all this, and I was like, yeah, I want the city to pay for your porta potties, I want the city to pay for this parking lot, I want the city to do this and this and this. What happened here?
Okay, so it's a good question, and I'm glad you asked it. After several meetings with Mr. Hawkes and with the board, this came through. This came up with, this is a city land, this is owned by the city. They basically have offered to help us do this, you know, in this area, through the meetings. So it was suggested that you, that you do this. I mean, you have the manpower.
Suggested by who?
Mr. Hawkes. Okay, this is Shontae Durham, our attorney, and I would, I would like her to step in right now at this point in time.
Good, good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, Mr. Hawkes, Mr. Stack. My name's Shontae Durham. I'm an attorney at Lindmeier Dawson. I've been retained by 308 BMX, just system. My address is 3903 West Park Drive, and I helped assist the board in some of the changes that you're noting, specifically number four. When we were taking a look at maybe how some other similar parks are run in North Platte, a similar, a similar situation maybe perhaps is the softball fields, or perhaps the soccer fields, those are all city property, and there are various organizations that take advantage of using that property, different nonprofits, so to speak, or softball teams that use that property, and the city provides the porta potties. So we were thinking it was similar to that with the way this is going to be built and ran. It's, it's really no different than those kinds of sporting fields that the city is running, and since it's city property, that's where the change in that proposal came from. And I think if I, I'd just like to highlight, the top of this says draft, so this is in a working draft format, and I think the hope from this meeting is we can take away what the, what the points of contention are and what are the issues that we need to address in order to be able to move forward. What Bunny was speaking about earlier is, without an, without a license agreement that gives them permission to use this land, they, they can't get grants, they can't ask solicit donations, they're kind of stuck. So this is a license agreement to request to use the city property with the function, in, in, in connection with the way it's stated in this agreement.
Okay, I get that, that's what I'm trying to talk about.
We just want to make it clear that it's not like, hey, we're asking you to turn over property to us. That's not what's happening. We just wanted to make that clear for the record.
Okay. So I guess, I don't know, you know, your original site proposal, I would need to see what's your revised site proposal and your costs, because if you're talking, us paving a parking lot, I'm gonna tell you, that's a no-go for me. I'm gonna straight up tell you, that's a no-go. I, you know, that's a lot of money tied up in paving a parking lot and that kind of thing for me.
I don't need, I don't believe it needs to be.
Because that's what he was talking about originally. I, other parts of that, that I think that are part of, you know, could be part of, porta potties are, I don't even know what we spend on porta potties. I guess I gotta look in the claims and find out what we spend on porta potties every month for summer activities and that kind of stuff. But I, I start to get wary when we're starting to talk business expenses. In number five, you start talking, in point five, you start talking, city shall prepare the site by stripping and leveling the premises within 60 days of this agreement being signed. BMX shall have the right to improve the property. And then, so you're talking about, yeah, we're gonna take the brush off of it, basically, right? That's what you're talking about?
Say that again.
In number five, clearing, you're talking about taking the brush off?
The brush off?
Yeah, she's, you know, tree branches, things like that, that's what she said, right?
Yes, I did.
So that's what you want off, in that agreement with number five?
Well, in this agreement, it says the city shall prepare the site by stripping and leveling the premises.
So what are you wanting, exactly? That's what I'm trying to get at. I want it more specified, okay? You know?
We can spec, we can specify it and make that change.
Yeah.
That's pretty specific. They want it flattened and leveled.
How far, I mean, I mean, are you wanting to go out there with rotor grade equipment and everything else?
The understanding was the city has the equipment necessary versus.
And then you guys are gonna bring in the dirt in order to build the track and everything else? That's what you're looking at?
That is correct.
And then number seven, I have a problem with in here, it says, which are installed, any improvements in fixtures capable of removal without damage of the premises, which are installed by BMX, may be removed by BMX. I think that must be a must. I'm not gonna lie. If you guys fold, I think it's imperative that you guys, as a corporation, are now liable, and that would be tied up into your.
Insurance.
Yes.
Okay.
I think that has to be a must to me, anyway. You know, if you're talking about removal and that kind of stuff upon, you know, falling apart as an organization, not saying you will, but I'm saying if you have that problem, that it's a must for me, looking at it.
The only, I guess, in response to that, the original draft agreement that was provided by Mr. Stack to 308 before I got involved, had the May originally, and I think the question is.
I'm telling you, I want a must.
Well, the question is, what if you want a different organization to come in and run the track the same way it was being run by 308, but 308 dissolves? What if you want to keep it? If you keep a must in there, then they have to take it out, even if the city wants to keep it for that purpose.
You keep a maybe in there, and then all of a sudden, it's like, no, I guess we don't want to touch any of that, and then it all falls back onto us, having to, of tax dollars to go back in there and redo it. See my side at that point?
Well, this came from Mr. Stack, so we just went with it, but I get your point, but Shontae has a good point as well. We can. I can see where that would be a problem for you.
Okay, so some better language there might, might be more helpful, just something that I saw.
Does anyone else, though, think that, you know, if, if a nonprofit agency, you know, God forbid, they were to dissolve, you might want to continue to run this park with the improvements that have been made on it? If another group steps up and says, hey, you know, if the softball field, suddenly all the softball teams stop, you know, being there, do you want the softball groups to take out all the diamonds and the bleachers and everything, or do you want to look for somebody else to be able to take advantage and use that property? So that's the only, that's the, that's the counter position, I guess.
Personally, the softball fields, I think, should be run by the city, and the city should have more control over them than the nonprofits, but that's a whole nother issue not talking about today.
We were just proposing, you know, something similar to the way maybe some other parks are being treated and some other organizations are being treated. That's, that's where the idea came from, treat, treat it similar, treat it fair, you know, that sort of thing. So if you think that it has to be that way, that's, you're entitled.
That's just me, I'm just one of eight, but.
Yep.
Glenn.
I have another question for you. When the boys wanted to build that building over there on South Park, they came to us and asked us for some money. They went out and raised $100,000 plus, and we did give them $40,000 out of the New Bern funds. How do I explain to them that they had to raise some money before we would give them any money, and I am just gonna give it to you folks? And the same with the tennis courts. When they wanted the tennis courts refinished, they went out and raised most of that money, and then they came here, and we gave them money to finish the tennis courts. How do I explain it to them?
Well, Mr. Peterson, I, I kind of see your point, but we are stuck with raising the monies until we get the agreement. This was agreed on the last two meetings for us to get this agreement. In the last meeting, it was imperative that you made these, that this council asked, it was imperative that we get the agreement, so that we can get more funding. And so that's where I was at with it. I didn't know that you ever promised anything like that before. I don't know what to tell you. This is a community effort that has been taken upon by some volunteers, as this board has, and we've slowly melded together and tapped every resource, but it's, the last meeting, you said, get the agreement.
See, the other thing that I have a little problem with is, I called a couple of the surrounding communities, and the BMX went quite well for three, four, five years, and now, when they used to have 60 members, they've got three or four. So the BMX track is no longer in use. Oh, there's a couple neighborhood kids play on it, but it just doesn't last.
I disagree with you, Mr. Peterson.
Well, sure, you can.
It's one of the most upcoming sports right now in America. It's going to take some time. It's kind of like soccer. Baseball and football dominated this country, and now you've got soccer. It's dominating the country. You will have three, the BMX bicycles, they're for everyone. And this track is something that I think this community really could use. It would be attractive. That area of the park, it's a park, it's been unused for I don't know how long. I don't even know how long it's been a park. I didn't even know it was a park until I started getting involved in this. And I think it would enhance our community, it would also bring in families, and people like living by parks, so I think it would enhance the neighborhoods. This isn't a motor, it's a bicycle. It's for families, and we, our mission is kind of to provide this for families, to get them off of the, you know, telephones and the laptops and the gadgets that they're using, get them out there and play. And this is a, it's free to this community. It's free. Now, once the agreement is done, I think it's really up to the public, then, after that, to, to come forward and start donating. We have a website, we have spent a lot of money on that, we have put out advertising, we're out knocking on doors all the time. We just got another $1,000 from the Walmart. I mean, they freely gave that to us. So I disagree with you on it falling off, and as a board, we've all committed to this. If one of us is going to be stepping down, or retiring, or God forbid we die, we will have somebody else to replace them. It'll be mandatory, and we have stringent rules of getting on our board. We have all done background checks on ourselves, we've had, provided all of that. We're taking this very seriously. Been working at it, I've been on this for over a year, and was here a year ago. Brandon's been on it for two years, so we're not giving up. And I'll just point out, there's nothing in this agreement, for those that don't have it in front of them, for those listening, doesn't have a promise for the city to give them any funds. There's nothing in here about an X, a dollar amount that is being provided. This is to use the property in connection with a BMX track. There's nothing, today, no one's coming here and asking for any money specifically from the board, a certain dollar amount. Nothing like that is in this agreement. Yes, Mr. Baker?
I've sat here quiet long enough. We just voted 20 minutes ago about, and, you know, lengthening out Gary's project to help draw people here, to help get people to our community to come and jobs here. One of the biggest things we always hear is there's not stuff for families to do. These people are trying to do something on a park that has been sitting vacant for, what, 15, 20 years, as a tree dump, dirt dump. The most activity that has happened on that thing in the last 10 years is the dirt being removed and taken to the dump for the police department to have a new firing range. That's the most activity I've seen on it, and I used to live out by it. Second thing is, you mentioned about people wanting to live by houses, you're trying to build a cul-de-sac just south of there, actually to the south property, or the south of the property line of this, they want to build a cul-de-sac. We've seen the proposals. What better way to sell a house than having a park right down the street? You know, secondly, my opinion on number four, this is no different than North Platte Little League Baseball. We just gave them a bunch of, not only New Bern funds, but money out of the general fund to help cover the cost of that new bathroom and new concession stand that was built, was it two years ago or last year, that was built. That came from us. These guys have never even asked for a single tax dollar. We gave them tax dollars to help with that. They don't pay the city a fee. Anybody can go use that field. Our employees go water it, mow it, take care of it, rake it. We paved the parking lot, we take care of the parking lot in there. So I see no difference, that's, that, right there, North Platte Little League Baseball is a nonprofit organization, these guys are a nonprofit organization. They're providing an, or something for the youth of this town to do. That's the same thing BMX, their way is doing. I am 100% behind this, and honestly, if you guys get this approved for October 1st, I will give you $3,000 cash to put towards this out of my own pocket.
Yes. Thank you. And when I, you're, you're right, when I pulled the deeds on this, this property was, some of these lots were deeded to the city in 1983, so it has literally been city property sitting there for basically as long as I've been alive, so. What a youngster. I totally aged myself there. Yes, Mr. Coleman.
I sense your frustration. I think I would be frustrated too, under the circumstance that you find yourself in. The one thing, I've heard Glenn say over and over, that how this kind of program has fallen on his face in other communities. I heard you guys say that it's a fast-growing thing. It might be helpful if you gave us some evidence of where this wonderful growth is happening and where there has been some success.
We have provided that in the past, Jim, and.
Would you kind of reiterate that a little bit?
Well, I'll let Brandon reiterate that. Say your name.
Brandon McCook, president, founder of 308 BMX, 2211 West Walker Road, North Platte. I think I know the community that Mr. Peterson is referring to, because it is the only failing BMX community within a nine-state region. Part of that is due to lack of leadership, lack of marketing, lack of want for anybody to take control of their situation.
Where are they?
We're a completely different group than, than Tri-City BMX, Omaha BMX. I recently did a analytics off of just our Facebook posts and, and who likes us, who follows us, and per capita, when you compare North Platte to Carney, we're destroying them. them with our likes and follows and our post remarks, and they currently have 237 current likes, 492 members.
Where are the... Where are the stats from before that we provided in?
Right.
What are the... Where are the tracks that are doing so great?
The tracks that are doing the best are Aberdeen, South Dakota, which has an estimated population under North Platte, Nebraska. The population is roughly 20,000. So if I remember the consensus, it was around 20,000 people in Aberdeen, South Dakota. Another community is Raytown BMX in Kansas, very similar community to North Platte. They average 60 to 70 races per race event. In a community the size of North Platte, I would think that 60 to 70 people that would go out and race on a Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night, whatever night it happens to be, in a community this small, would be a pretty phenomenal number because that's more than two football teams. So, you know, when you put that together on a weekly or bi-weekly basis, the numbers are astronomical.
I'd just like to say that I'm with Brooke on this. I think we need to do whatever we can to help make this happen.
Thank you.
I'm in favor of this.
Jim, if you go back and look at some of the... We have provided everything that the city council's asked, everything. And so if you go back and look at those, and you want to...
Excuse me, Bunny, but what I hear the most are detractors who are saying it's going belly up everywhere else. That's what I hear the loudest.
Can I ask a question? What communities, if you don't mind me asking, have you contacted specifically?
No, I think we need to go back to Jim's statement right there.
And it goes back.
Wait, just wait. So, Jim, you're right. When these first were coming up, they... And it's just like kind of the soccer fields or Little League or the ball diamonds and things. They went through their rough times as well, and some of them did fail. But this is a sport, when we've provided for you in the past, that is upcoming. It's in the Olympics now. So it's not something that's going to go away. It is going to come on, but we have got... And you're right, we are frustrated, but... And it's... We are kind of stuck between the city council and the public right now. And once we get this agreement, believe me, the public is going to have to come through and help us. I mean, it's also their... It's their park as well. So specifically, it doesn't matter what communities right now. It's just that the fact that we're not going to give away... We've been here two years. I think it's time to get this going, and I think that this community deserves it, and I do believe the families and the children in this community will do nothing but benefit from this. And then I think that area will be enhanced. I think the real estate will go up in that area, which is more taxes to our community. The tourism board has put out a letter a couple of years ago telling you that conservatively, this is bringing in at least 750,000 to just the community in tourism dollars, that alone each year. So, you know, we're back to this agreement, Jim, and the council. This isn't... Go ahead.
No, no, you're good.
That's been helpful to me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes?
Number five.
Sure.
So we signed this agreement, and all of a sudden, within 60 days, we're on the hook, not for cash, but for whatever the cost of diesel is, maintenance and salaries and stuff that's about there to do that. What next? If you don't have the money to move forward to the next step, we're out all that money for doing the leveling and... What do you call it? Stripping and leveling? And so we're gonna be back here again going, "Now what?"
Well, once we sign this agreement, the New Bern funds will be available. I can't go forward with the New Bern funds on that until this...
That's gonna happen within 60 days.
No. And that is that... You know what? As a council, you can change that date time if you wish. It's just something... What this is is a draft, sir, and it's not going... We can change anything in it we want. Anything is negotiable on this.
Since we were hopeful to have it agreed to by October 1st, I put 60 days just so we haven't... So we're not into the middle of winter needing to clear an entire lot. So... But if it needs to be a different timeframe, I think a different timeframe is completely reasonable.
I'm all for this. We just need to move forward without hanging the taxpayers out there.
Right.
Worst-case scenario, I mean, if they don't do it in 60 days, we have a flat spot to put trees on this winter. Honestly.
Fill out the diesel fuel and salaries for doing it.
Yeah.
And parking for the people that use the bike trail that runs parallel to the property.
Here's the thing. If we go out there and level that place and they go away, we've still got a viable park site.
Exactly. If I may, and like I said, this is one of those deals where you just hate to be in the middle of it, but, you know, a couple of things, you know, I admire what you guys are doing. I think Brooke's absolutely right. That park's out there sitting vacant, and... But we're kind of stuck here. We're not getting raging support from the city. You understand where we're coming from? It's gonna be left to us to make a decision on this. And I'm a little concerned about the funding. I admire Brooke for, you know, he's willing to contribute. I'd like to see this thing go, but I don't want to give false hopes. And the thing that bothers me at this point, even the way it's set up now, I don't know... If we pass this motion, we give you a license. You still don't have anything because we don't have an agreement with the city, and that's my concern. We're... You know, it really... I... What I'm trying to say, I don't want to build false hopes to you guys. I really don't.
Mr. Nisley, I understand what you're talking about. I would not balk one minute, and I haven't heard one person that I've talked to yet that would mind their tax dollars going to this at all. Not one person. Not one. I haven't heard one, one person... And if anything, the conversations have been, "Do whatever you can to get this going." And I don't mind my tax dollars going there.
And Bunny, I... You know what? That's maybe something that hasn't been really explored and maybe should be. Let me just... And I'm just trying to try to get this resolved some way. I have got a phone call from at least a resident here in North Platte. They have some concern on that location in the sense that, you know, we now have that Buffalo Bill corridor. There's business being built on there, and is this the highest and best use for city property? You know what I'm saying? I mean, there's some concern that maybe it shouldn't be there because it could be used for something to be more beneficial.
Okay, Mr. Nisley, you've talked to one person that's been against that. I would say that... Okay. I would say that if there's gonna be businesses out there, this would do nothing but enhance it because it would look better first and foremost. Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to coin a clarification. You said the city still needs to prove it. Are you referring to the conditional use permit or something else?
Well, yeah, and I'm not really clear, humbly confused on this. We give you a permit, but what does that give you?
Well, that gives us the ability to move forward with seeking grant funding, with seeking the conditional use permit, with getting the necessary things in place that are halted by the fact that it's all contingent upon us even having the ability to use this property. That's what...
No, no, and I'm not arguing with you. I think that's... You're correct on that, but my concern is, if you go back to what Glenn's saying here, these other projects have been easier for us to deal with because they raise substantial funds. And I think the council here, if you raise 50% of the money, we've sometimes found a way to get things done for people, but we haven't got to that stage, and I'm just concerned about it.
I think it would be easier to come before the council, after the license agreement is in place, and give actual numbers, but without... Again, without a license agreement, we can't get promises. We can't get the grants necessary to come in and say, "This is for certain, the dollar amount," because it's all... I mean, it's contingent. It doesn't count unless we know we can move forward.
Did the North Platte Little League, did they have substantial amount of funding before they started this?
Yeah, they did. They came up... They came up with like $100,000, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was a little over $100,000.
See, they came up with the money, and that... Once you got the money raised...
10, 12 years. We've given these guys a year and a half, almost 18 months, to come up with this money, you know, less, and we gave North Platte baseball 10, 12 years to come up with $100,000, and we gave them the rest.
I don't think it was.
I begged to get it from Gus. Get it from Gus, because I know that one out there has played for that league for the last six years, and we've done the fundraiser the last six years to help make the money for that, and they were doing the fundraiser prior to that, because I've coached those last six years.
Okay, so we...
Just to relay some concerns.
Okay, so we've got enough money in our account, and I'm not gonna say how much right now, to get the tourism grant.
Bunny? Excuse me.
Go ahead.
Why can you not tell us how much money you have in the bank?
Because I don't know exactly what it is.
Well, I think that's...
I would say, okay, it's over $25,000.
Okay.
In the bank.
When we started... When Brandon started this, please correct me if I'm mistaken here...
No, go ahead.
But it seems to me about two years ago, when Brandon came forward, he said he would like to use this property so he could build a BMX park. And he said it would not cost the city anything, and he would raise the money. And that point, if I remember right, it was $188,000, and you're saying it was less than that now. Is that correct so far?
Yes.
All right. That was two years ago. We gave him how many months? Nine months? Nine months. That's not very long to raise $188,000.
That was from last year, yes.
$188,000. Now, I don't remember the date, but was it in March? I think the ending of that was somewhere maybe February, March of last year. Is that correct?
No, it was like in July or something.
Okay. Whatever that was. Came back in when that timeframe was up. You know, if I remember right, I think you raised $14,000.
Yes.
Does that sound familiar?
That was correct.
Okay. At that time, you said, or Brandon said, I don't remember who, you said that you can't raise money unless the city says you can use this property. I'm trying to remember all that.
That was a verbal agreement, yes.
Okay. So we said, "Yep, you can use it," and you said you'd go out and get that money. Now you're telling me you can't tell me how much money you raised. I'm really confused.
No, I...
I'm truly confused.
And I get that point. Okay, so we have $25,000 with the tourism board. The conditions are that we have an agreement with the city. We have $10,000 with Mid-Nebraska Community Foundation. We have $10,000 sitting in that also there from Patrick and Kathleen Keenan, which I advised all this before. We have missed... Without this agreement, we cannot get the Nebraska Game and Parks grant because it has to go through the city. They have to have an agreement. I can't get a conditional use permit without that. So we have... And then Walmart Distribution Center has come through for us with flying colors, and we have spent a good amount, I couldn't tell you exactly right now, on marketing. We spent 1,800 on our website. We have spent on T-shirts, the Facebook stuff, stickers, this, and then just being out there. We have purchased... I can't even think of what all we've spent the money on, but anyway, nonetheless. And now we're retaining an attorney because we were advised in some of the meetings that it was to have that. So that is going to cost us as well. I'm not blowing a dime on this, and I'm not hiding any money from you, but I can't... We... As a board, we're at this point where we're all frustrated. We can't go forward. We feel like we're not going forward any... Without this agreement. And it's all... It's to this point where, yes, we're asking the city to do more now because we're realizing it's a city park. There's also some imperabilities with the soccer fields, the softball diamonds, and then we're sitting there thinking, "Okay." Then things are apt to change. Mayor, I agree with you completely. You're right on your previous, but we're also at a point where to go forward, we need the city. We have.
Okay. I understand what you're saying. I was under the understanding that once you were... The problem prior to this was that you couldn't get anybody to provide money because there was no yes on the property.
Yes, you're right.
So once that was done, I was under the understanding, once that yes was done, you'd have a better opportunity to...
You're right.
And you could apply for grants. Now, you've added this?
Now, yes, and we have added that.
Okay. But you still only have...
Oh, with all our grants, yeah, we've got enough, and then we have some things over here, but, you know, that's not gonna matter right now. I mean, as far as these things. I've gotta have the agreement.
I think it matters up here as to how much money you cut in your pocket. I think that's what I'm hearing.
Okay.
Now, I could be wrong. Maybe I'm...
I think we're in a position like Mr. Brooke, Mr. Baker, you know, promising... How do you go and solicit donations without assurances that it's gonna happen? How do you actually put money in a bank and solicit money that somebody gives to you to put in your bank account without them knowing that you're actually gonna do what you say you're gonna do? That's the position that 308 BMX is in. So the getting out the word, you know, face-to-face to people and asking face-to-face donations, we can't do that stuff without the kind of agreement that we need in place regarding moving forward on this.
Mayor, the last meeting we had, the biggest thing that came out of that was this agreement, and they said, "You need to get this agreement with the city and work out the details." Now, we are in conjunction... We want to work in conjunction with the city on this. We can't do it alone. There's no way. It's a city park, first of all. And secondly, we want to provide this for the community. But now we're... Things are going to change, and I'm certain that this will not remain... The agreement will not be the exact same as tomorrow. I mean, I think it'll change. Tomorrow... We're gonna work out these details. Do you see what I'm saying with Mr. Steinbeck saying that the 60 days was unreasonable or whatever? He didn't like that. We can change anything. This is negotiable. We want to work with the city on this.
That's the point of this meeting.
I do have a question. Are we gonna vote on this?
Well, if there is...
We don't have anything to vote on. We don't have anything to vote on. That's my concern. I'm not agitating. We just... We don't have an agreement to vote on, and we say you give a license. We're no further ahead than we were before you started this meeting.
There you go.
That's my concern.
I guess I'm not understanding, because I wasn't here in February, but I read the media, and I think it was you, Mr. Nisley, who commented on the need for a contract regarding the license agreement in order for them to move forward, and stressed the urgency of them having that in order to move forward. And so that's why they brought this up before the board again, is to specifically address the concern you brought up in the February meeting to get a license agreement, to get a contract. to get a contract. So it's not just word of mouth. It's something that says, hey, we can do this.
No, no, I'm not arguing with you. But here's the problem, so you understand. You know, it's kinda like, we have these proposed drafts, but we really don't have an agreement from the... You don't have an agreement.
Well, if this draft is acceptable to the majority of the board, then it doesn't have to be a draft. It can be a final version regarding the license agreement. The legal description is attached. There's no blanks, other than the date that it's gonna be executed and signed.
Well, you know, I'm not arguing... Again, what I'm trying to say, at this point, I can't accept this agreement as it stands.
Well, we'd like to know what changes could be made to make it acceptable to the majority of the board, or if there's enough to vote in favor of it today.
If I might... I did not see this proposed draft number four until tonight.
Oh, no, that's... No, 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 no.
No, they did not, because I brought it today.
Okay. Okay, okay, and this is...
So I think, in fairness to the council, we do need to take it back and have some discussions between your group and administration to try and go through some of this to better understand it. One thing I noticed when I got it is I turned to the back page, and you'll notice who the surveyor was who surveyed this thirty-some years ago. The legal description you're using on this is for the entire piece. That was never part of the understanding either.
This was a legal description provided to me by the Register of Deeds office for the proposed law, that it's part of the...
Right, but what that is, is the entire piece outside of the...
So we may need to make some adjustments to what specific legal description we're discussing.
Yes.
The assessor office... When I went there a month or two ago, they had it broke down into three parcels. And so Shontae, in all fairness to Shontae, she has just come on board with this, and she is, you know, recently, and she is pulling this together for us on this side of it. So she did a fantastic job of trying to get this nailed down.
But we may need to make some changes.
Yep. We're willing to make these.
I think that's where we need to sit down and get some of these things...
So what... Okay, so with that, that very sentence right there, what do you want me to do? Sit down with you and have a meeting with you and Mr. Stack?
Yes, but please give me an opportunity to review this.
That'll be fine. I'd like to have this on the next city council agenda meeting, so that...
A final proposed version.
Can I make an order to suspend or postpone?
Leave the table?
Or table the motion?
I don't think we're done talking yet.
No, but I mean, we can table the motion. We can still talk.
Well, we could, you know...
We can talk till we're putting a face on this. We've been running around in circles for over a year and a half on this, on who's gonna, you know, budge first. Are they gonna budge, or are we gonna budge?
Well, don't you think you need a contract?
I do agree, we need a contract. We need a correct contract. And right now's a good time to hash it out. But if we keep dragging it out longer, that's just longer it's gonna take to get this going.
And Brandon just had a good point. We came here the last... Oh, I'm so sorry. Go ahead.
For you, I need some clarification here. I also had, Jim, I also had a citizen come to me who was not at all in favor of this. And his thought was that would be a prime location for business out there. And it's my understanding that we don't have the ability to dispose of that. Am I incorrect in that?
Jim, when this was originally laid out, it was in exchange for the land that the doctors took on the south side of Leota over there where Centennial Park is. But what I would need to do to be able to answer that more specifically is go back and look, because the reason that the fence runs down there between the parking lot and the hayfield is because the original alignment on South Buffalo was gonna swing around those houses that were down there at that time. Well, we ended up buying those homes out, and we straightened that out. So there is a part of that, I think, that could be made available for something, but I would need to go back and check that out for sure.
Thank you.
I would just wanna say that these people worked hard on this project, and this land has been vacant. And if we... I'm telling you as a council member, if we can't go along with this, I'd like to see something from the city as what we're gonna do with that, because I don't think we're doing much by leaving it vacant either. I'm just being honest with you. I, you know, I'd like to see this get worked out, but...
Okay, so back to the contract piece. Okay? So I've been thinking about what you guys said, and it probably shouldn't be a must, but it should be something in there in the language that says, you know, that the city within would have that, you know, little... I don't know, maybe I just don't understand it well enough. You know, I'm not, you know, a great legalese or something. You know, but just something that we would have that option, not leaving it up to you guys, no offense.
Okay.
Okay? Things like that. I also agree with Martin on item number five. We need to look at that verbiage of sixty days. I think things need to be posted as, "When you guys are ready for site development," i.e., "When you have the money and you guys are ready to go," then we'll start talking about, you know, getting that cleared and stuff like that. That's when the clocks start, not from the second that something like this has passed. Things like that are things I think need to be cleaned up. You know, he brought that... I didn't even look at the site, you know? Yeah, there's, you know, there's just some obvious things that need to be cleaned up on this, and then I don't see a problem with tabling it until the next meeting.
Okay, so what I will do is...
Oh, and I have one more question on seventeen.
Yeah, go ahead.
So seventeen, "City covenants that is possessed of a valid interest upon said premises and has a good right to lease the same, BMX shall pay all the real estate taxes, which there will be none, because it's city land," right?
That's not necessarily true either. If you remember right, anytime that we lease land or put it in somebody else's hands, the assessor then has to make a determination on whether or not that land is taxable.
But aren't you keeping this as a city... I guess we need to clear it out if it's a city park or not, because if it's technically a city park, then... I don't... Okay, anyways. And then what would that part that says, "Assessments and obligations which are or may become a lien on the premises," what are you talking about a lien?
What number is that?
That's number seventeen. That would be...
Are you guys looking at taking out a loan?
No, an example of that might be like a construction lien. Like if they hire a contractor to do a job, and they wanna execute a... It's their job to pay that lien. It's not the city's responsibility.
Okay.
The city's not responsible for any liens like that. And with regard to the issue of real property taxes, I had a similar question when I spoke with Mr. Stack, and Mr. Hawks is correct. The assessor makes the determination on how that property should be assessed for tax purposes, and this proposal says BMX will be responsible if real estate property taxes are imposed, that it will be their responsibility to pay that.
Then would it change that agreement that we have on that land, the covenant that says that it has to be used for city outdoor park? You know, how does that worded... Would that then affect that, if it was then taxable land?
Again, Andrew, you're asking me questions that I need an opportunity to be able to read.
So anyways, these are just questions that are coming to my head, so...
The city attorney, probably.
I mean, I don't expect any answers now, I'm just trying to float some questions here, so, to help you guys out.
I wanna go back on paragraph seventeen. You understand that the must point, you would just want some kind of, like, the city...
The city has the option. If the city doesn't want it, then it's on you guys to clear it. That's kinda where I guess I'd be at.
You have the option to leave it as is or request BMX to remove it.
Yes.
And we just have a problem with the sixty days. We could maybe just broaden that, just at the time notice is given to the city council that the funding has been, or a certain amount of funding, or they're ready to go, then within sixty or thirty days of that notice, delivered notice, then you guys would prepare the site. Is something like that agreeable to the majority of the members?
It is.
Thank you.
Brandon brought to my attention a letter from the city of North Platte dated August third, two thousand sixteen, regarding the zoning verification. This was from Judy Clark. I'll just briefly read it. It says, "This letter is in response to a request concerning zoning verification of the properties described above regarding the construction of BMX Track and other outdoor activities. The property is currently zoned A1 transitional agriculture. According to the North Platte City Code of Ordinance, Section 156 dot zero four two, conditional uses, A, the following conditional uses may be located in the A1 district, subject to the provisions hereof. One, publicly owned or operated properties. Number six is amusement parks, community baseball or athletic fields, racetracks, circuses, carnivals, or fairgrounds. Eleven is public parks and playgrounds, including public recreation and service buildings. It appears that the proposed construction of the BMX Track may be allowed if a additional use permit is approved by the city council." So that was from the city Judy Clark. So that has been established as well. And I'll get you guys a copy of this.
That's fine. Can I ask another question real quick here? Is it possible to get a small contingent of the council, like, that the mayor could appoint four council members or three council members to kinda look at it before it comes back to the next city council, so that way they can kinda get some feedback beforehand, too? Would that be possible?
Would you say that, Mr. Wayne, again?
Well, we could certainly make it available to all council members and have a deadline, so it's circulated.
I just wanna make sure we get the feedback back, so that way we're not sitting there in two weeks, like, "Oh, I don't like the way this says," or that says, you know, then maybe you have some more feedback opposed to waiting...
We should have this...
Till night of.
Ready to sign or in place before it comes back.
I agree.
I do.
...to deal with, so it needs to go through the city attorney or administration. That's the only way we can do this.
Not if you have under quorum.
Huh?
Not if you have under quorum, I don't think.
You can get four of it.
Yeah.
Four together, but oh, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
I just wanna say is we can't work as a whole council. You gotta have some committee or something.
So that way we're not stuck in this situation in two weeks. That's what I wanna avoid, is being stuck in this situation in two weeks.
And who are you proposing for a committee?
I... I would propose...
That's the mayor's call.
Yeah.
He's got it.
Thank you. Thank you.
He's got names in his head.
Why don't we... There is a... There's a motion on the table in a second, if I'm not mistaken.
May I... One more item?
Yes, please.
I think Jim's right. He needs to review the agreement. I do, too. I saw it for the first time this evening, when I showed up late. But I'm real interested in where the council's gonna come down on paragraph four. It's hard for us to talk, because we're polar opposites, polar opposites on those issues. Payment of utilities and improvements.
My assessment is, I guess I flipped since the beginning of the meeting on that. I kinda agree, you know, if baseball's, you know, using that, tennis is using those big lights and everything else, they're using city utilities, so I don't have a problem with it.
The other thing is we'll have to install all this stuff.
My understanding is the utilities are available.